This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the town of North Haven.
Somebody cracked a joke.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our November Board of Selectmen meeting. I'm Michael Frieda, joined as always by our second selectman, Mr. William Piper, and our third selectwoman, Ms. Sally Buemi. Thank you very much for joining us this evening. I'm going to ask everyone to stand for our Pledge of Allegiance. Our Pledge of Allegiance is: Thank you. Item number two, are there any public comments to tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to...
Somebody has a...
Should I talk to the microphone?
Yes.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jill Mallor Kesselman. I live at 2255 Ridge Road. And my comment relates to item nine on the agenda, the reservation and appointments, the appointment of Danielle See Morphy. So I wanted to voice my strong support for the nomination of Danielle Morphy to the Community Services Commission. Danielle was nominated unanimously by North Haven's Democratic Town Committee to fill a vacancy left by Democrat Carol Frances-Cesquet, excuse me if I'm pronouncing her name incorrectly. Danielle is one of the first people that I met when I moved to North Haven just two years ago. She is friendly, smart, kind, compassionate, and able to think out of the box and generate ideas. Danielle is a team player, and her energy and enthusiasm are boundless. She is passionate about ensuring that our community is a caring one, that meets the needs of all its residents, especially those who face the greatest challenges. I have no doubt that Danielle will work hard to ensure that those in need of energy assistance receive it, that our food bank receives adequate donations to feed those who are in need, and that all families living in North Haven have the food needed to make Thanksgiving and Christmas dinners, and that children have presents to open at the holiday time. Danielle recognizes the critical importance of prevention and intervention programs and services for our residents of all ages, ranging from our youth through our senior citizens. And I am sure that she will work hard to ensure that those needs, those in need of mental health services, receive them. I have no doubt that Danielle Morphy will be an asset to the Community Services Committee. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Item number three, the approval of the minutes of the Board of Selectmen meeting of October 4th.
I'll move the approval of those minutes.
I'll second them.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Item number four. I'd like to set the stage for item number four tonight by saying that we had a wonderful event this past weekend on the North Haven Green as we unveiled a new monument, a war memorial monument for all of those veterans who served in post-Vietnam campaigns. It was an event that was attended by hundreds of people, North Haven residents and people from out of state who came in to be part of their families, who have had family members who served in those campaigns and were memorialized on that monument. And it was really a wonderful event. Now, in conjunction with that, we've been working very closely with Post-76 American Legion. We really support tremendously the veterans here in North Haven. Post-76 is very important to us. You see many veterans here this evening who are members of the Post. So tonight, we're going to be talking about the Post. We're going to be talking about what we'd like to do to promote the Post more. Our goal is to continue to bring in those veterans who live in North Haven to be Post-76 members. And the spokesman for tonight that we've invited to speak is Raymond Fowler, who will be representing Post-76. And we've asked Raymond, we've put him on the agenda, to be part of the agenda, Ray, to speak to us in a live audience about Post-76 and some of what we're trying to accomplish. Ray Fowler.
Thank you, and good evening. Please allow me to thank the Board of Selectmen for allowing Post-76 to have this time on your agenda. I know you're used to seeing me stand up here to talk about the evils of child abuse. But tonight, I have a much pleasanter job. I'm here to talk to you about American Legion, Post-76, North Haven's own. This month, the American Legion nationally will celebrate its 100th anniversary. A bunch of people who served together in the American Expeditionary Force in World War I, who appreciated the camaraderie and fellowship that they had while in service, got together and said, "We've got to keep this going." And they formed the American Legion. And then, a scant five years later, in 1923, the veterans from North Haven got together and said, "We've got to do the same thing." And ever since then, when North Haven veterans have come home and carefully and gently and with reverence hung up their uniforms, they've said, "We've served our country. Now, by extension, we must serve our community." And that's how Post-76 was born and the traditions that it continues to this day. Now, some of you may have a misconception about the American Legion. Some of you may feel that a Legion Post is a place where a lot of old veterans go to cuss, smoke, drink, and of course, run the bingo. Well, I've got to tell you, it's a real misconception. At Post-76, cussing and smoking is not only frowned upon, it's strictly prohibited within the Post. And drinking, we don't even have a bar. And BYOB doesn't mean "bring your own bottle." It means "bring your own best to serve the community." So there's no drinking at the Post. And to some of our North Haven residents, our ladies in particular, I'm sorry, we don't have a bingo. So all of those misconceptions that you may have had about the American Legion and Post-76, North Haven's own, are misconceptions. What we are is a community service organization made up of veterans of every branch of the American military, male, female, doesn't matter. You may be eligible for membership in the American Legion. And what do we do? We do community service work. We are North Haven's own. We dedicate ourselves to helping our community be a better place for everyone to live. And of course, by the very nature of our organization, we offer services to veterans and their families. That's what we do. What are we? Well, what we are is a conglomeration of fine people. We have every race, color, creed, nationality within our Post. At 500-plus members, we are the third-largest Post in the state of Connecticut and growing steadily. We need membership. But what we need even more than membership is active membership. Because the purpose of our Post is to serve this community in any way that we possibly can. That's why we call ourselves Post-76, North Haven's Own. We belong to the people of North Haven, and we are committed to serve the people of North Haven in any way that we can. You know, when we gingerly and tenderly hung up that uniform, there was a big tendency to say, "Hey, you know what? We've done our share. We went out there, we served the country. Many of us in combat." But no, we couldn't do it. We looked at that uniform. We remembered that it was honor, tradition, values, service. And we said, "You know what? We have something more to offer. We have something more that we can do, not only for our country, but for our community." Now, my wife Sally and I have been in this town now for 46 years. I was away a while, you know that, but for 46 years, we've been here. And what a great town. What a magnificent town. And the mission of our Post has been, and always will be, to add value to the town that we all love so much. So what we want to do is we want to invite every veteran, not only in the town of North Haven, but if you don't have a Legion Post where you live, come see us. We meet the third Thursday of every month at 7:00 PM, or 1900 for you military types. And we meet at 7:00 PM. And we don't meet in July and August, but we meet every other month. Come down. Come see us. Come see what we're about. Now, you do have to be a veteran to be a member of our organization, and there are a few other qualifications, but come see us anyway. If you wore this country's uniform, male, female, Army, Marine Corps, Navy, Air Force, Coast Guard, we want to meet you. We want to talk to you. We want to see if you feel as we do that the value of any organization should be what it can contribute to the value of the town of North Haven. And for 95 years, that's what Post-76, North Haven's Own Post, has done. So please, come and visit us. You can't cuss, you can't smoke, you can't drink, and there's no bingo. But you know what? We'll find another way to make you feel welcome. We'll find another way to make you feel appreciated. We speak your language. We've been there, we've done that. And we understand that sometimes, when you come home and hang up that uniform, whatever color it was, we know that sometimes you can feel that you're on the outside looking in. Come down to the Post. You'll be on the inside looking out. I guarantee it. Thank you so very much for your time. Board of Selectmen, thank you.
Thank you very much, Raymond. We've known each other a long time, since almost the first week I took office. And that was one of your finest moments here tonight. You've had a lot of fine moments. So thank you for promoting the Post. And thank you to all of our Post-76 members here this evening. And for those watching on live TV, thank you, those veterans, for your wonderful service to our country. The town of North Haven greatly appreciates each and every one of you. Thank you. Item number five. We put this on the agenda tonight because I believe there's a man, who I asked to come here tonight, that deserves special recognition for what I saw to be a remarkable personal effort. And his name is Pete Criscola. He's a member of our North Haven Fire Commission, one of the longest-standing commissioners in the history of North Haven.
He was here when I was here.
We have here tonight the chairman of our commission, Mr. Pat Nozolillo. And we have also our fire chief, Paul Janushevsky, who also share my view that this was a remarkable, outstanding, and heroic effort what this man has done. So let me take you back in time to May of this year. We had this tragedy on Quinnipiac Avenue. An explosion. Firefighters sent into a scene. Mutual aid, all different agencies responding. Police officers in an explosion, most of whom were in the hospital as a result of that. So to Paul Janushevsky's credit, our chief, he expressed the need for a drone. A drone is very important to a local fire department. A drone is critically important for searching missing persons, for giving the fire department a panoramic view of fires as the command scene commanders are deploying men and women into a fire. And a drone is critically important. Recently, in the past month, we had a missing person at the Quinnipiac River. The drone gives the fire department a great deal of perspective in terms of analysis and how to respond. Now, the cost of a drone is about $28,000. So we didn't have it in the budget. So it was this gentleman here tonight, Mr. Pete Criscola, who personally went out and solicited many, upwards of 15 different companies here in town, major grand list members. Over the course of several months, he's raised $40,000 to go and to help pay for that drone. And some of the companies he went to are Sims Metal Management, Don Mar Builders, Pro Clean Cleaning, North Haven Funeral Home, Braskem Bartlam, a huge wholesale liquor distributor in town, Lou Dowell's Restaurant, a developer who's developing a site with us here in North Haven, the Bantam Construction Company, Aldbrook Steel, one of our largest grand list members, and has come and raised $40,000. But over the course of the past seven years, in conjunction with this, he's raised almost a total of $70,000 with other initiatives that have benefited our North Haven Fire Department. On top of what he did in terms of soliciting all these companies, he did it himself. He deserves all the credit. He went out over months and months' worth of time. Not only is the North Haven Fire Department able now to get the drone, but there's going to be an all-terrain-type vehicle that the chief has wanted for quite some time. And the chief, I'm going to ask him to say a few words to explain exactly what that vehicle will do. So we're able now to get two things that the fire department wanted that will help the critical assessment of incidents that happen in town and help the North Haven Fire Department in another area with this all-terrain vehicle that will cost the taxpayers no money as a result of the wonderful fundraising efforts that Peter has done. So this government likes to acknowledge people who care about the town of North Haven. This government likes to acknowledge people that don't have any political agendas, that want to work to improve the town, that want to make sure that the greater good of the town of North Haven is being addressed. And when Paul Janushevsky expressed this need as a result of what happened back in May, we have the Fire Commission supporting Pete in a bipartisan effort. Again, the chairman, Pat Nozolillo, is here, and our fire chief is here, as I mentioned. So Peter, I want to tell you that the town of North Haven appreciates your efforts. I think it was so remarkable what you did and what you've done in the past several years to allow the fire department to get other equipment through your fundraising activities. And this government appreciates your effort. And I want a live TV audience to know that we're acknowledging your great effort tonight. And thank you very much on behalf of the Board of Selectmen. Yes.
Michael, first I want to say thank you and to the board. And that's very humbling. And I do not want to take anything away from the Colonel. It's more important to veterans than I am, trust me. But I do want to say this. You're right, it's non-political. This is not a political effort in any way, shape, or form. What I do want to start off by saying, as a little boy in St. Michael's School, which you remember very well, I always was the head of the math team, always. Could not get on the spelling team. Couldn't make the spelling team at all. Just the nuns just would not allow me there. Couldn't spell. But I did learn how to spell one word right off the bat. Team. Team. There's no I in team. No I. I went out, I raised the money. But I always was able to raise the money because of the town that we live in. No one bets on a bad team. No one invests money in a bad business. We have a great town. We have a great fire department. The chief worked every single day, nights, and I know weekends because I called him on Saturday nights. I called him on Sunday morning. I tortured him about this drone, about this. We have our chairman there right alongside us. He backs us all the time. It's a bipartisan because it's not politics, okay? But we have a great town. People aren't afraid to invest. They're not afraid to invest in this town, okay? Fire Department is the best of anywhere. We have a 32-man department with four administrative staff, okay? There's towns with 300 firefighters, 300. We do more calls per volume than they do. We're on the road more than they are with a small town, per volume, okay? Think about that. We have the best of the best of paid men. We have the best volunteer department you could find anywhere in the state of Connecticut and maybe beyond. They're very highly trained. They're the best of the best. We have the best under Tom McLaughlin, the police department. We have our Public Works under Lynn and Victor. Towns, streets, leaves, parks, everything is just perfect, okay? Board of Ed, Dr. Cronin, okay? People like that. They're investing in something that's worthwhile. We have now our resource officers. They're retired North Haven police. You can't get better. I mean, everything that we do in this town, we do top shelf. And we have our boards and commissions. All the boards and commissions work well. Our board especially works great. We have a great working board. We have a great chairman. Things just work cohesively. Everything is just wonderful. And we go one step farther. How do you get this? How do you get people to invest? You get them to invest because you go, you have... Ed Swankowski, he holds the purse strings. I think he has Gorilla Glue on him. He doesn't let money out. He just doesn't give anybody money. But after all is said and done, you have to come... Every team has a captain, whether it's hockey, baseball, football, whatever, a captain. We have a captain, the first selectman, okay? CEO, business leader. We're able to do this because we have a town out of 169 towns, I believe. We're in the top 10. We're a AAA-rated town for five consecutive years. People that invested, that came and stepped to the plate when I called, and we have a common denominator here. Everyone they gave on that list, and there's more which will be announced at the press conference, they're either town residents, town business owners, or both. But the biggest common denominator, everyone on that list is a personal friend of mine. Every single one. Over the years, we've become personal friends. They've, they gave the money to me. But they gave it to me only because they saw that I'm part of a team that they weren't afraid to invest in. If I came to them and didn't have a team, didn't have a AAA-rated town, didn't have one of the top 10 in the state of Connecticut, you think they would give me the money? They would say, "No, go somewhere else." So I want to say thank you, Mike, for all the accolades, but it was a team effort, and I appreciate it. And just as another note I want to add, there's a lot of friends out there that I didn't call yet. I will be calling you tomorrow. So take the call. Take the call. Thank you for... And chief, I'd like to have the chief come up because now he could explain all the intricate things that we're doing and what we're buying because he's the guy who does all the real work. I just go out and raise the money.
Thank you to the Board of Selectmen. I just want to say what an honor it is this evening to be in front of so many veterans. Thank you for your service. It's truly an honor to be standing here in front of all of you today. Spoke to this group a number of times, and it's a great group of individuals. To the subject at hand regarding the drone, so a lot of people might be asking, you know, "How often are you going to use it?" You know, when we first started having this conversation back in July, the commissioner and I, at that point in time in the last so many months, I already had three different scenarios where we could have used it. Keep in mind, the incident at Quinnipiac Avenue was already discussed, where I had to call in a drone from two surrounding towns, Guilford and Nor branford, which took some time to get on scene, especially with the amount of resources that were coming to that scene. And we were able to look at live video overhead from a protected area and make some strategic planning moves at that point to ultimately save two homes that were about... One was on fire, one was about to be on fire. Shortly later, that May was a pretty bad May for us. We had the tornado come through. We had streets which we couldn't get down at all because there were trees and telephone poles that were completely blocking the street. Well, how great would it have been for us instead of having to put my men out on foot and trek up the street and take that much more time to launch a drone, send a drone down the street, and look at all the homes and the houses and make sure there are no trees on top of houses, nobody trapped in their homes. There's been times on Sleeping Giant. There's been times Peters Rock and Quinnipiac River just in the last few months alone, where being able to send that out to search for people would have really cut down on our scene time. What this drone is also going to have with it is what's called FLIR. It's essentially thermal imaging. So he's going to be able to go out, day, night, doesn't matter, and pick up heat signatures in the area so that we can identify any bodies at all that are out there, differentiate from an animal, from a human, and of course, dispatch resources appropriately. So when the commissioner first came to me and said that, you know, "Hey, what's the need that's pressing right now in the fire department?" That's what came to mind. Keep in mind, he's also raised money for a CPR compression machine, which gives compressions to anybody in cardiac arrest automatically without the use of human hands at all. So it doesn't get tired. And he's also raised money for a battery-operated Jaws of Life, which allows us to deploy that so much faster than having to start pulling out hydraulic lines and getting a generator started and being limited only to the length that you have for hydraulic lines. So again, when he came to us in June and says, you know, "What's your need? The drone came to mind." I didn't doubt him, but I didn't think he'd do it that fast. He pulled up the money. Within probably about 30 days, he had the money. Then he kept going. He did it. He also, so then he came to me and says, "Well, jeez, you know, what else can this money go towards?" And you know, we try identifying needs of the town and the department that are the things that we'd like to have. Of course, every year we go before the Board of Finance, there's ultimately capital needs which are at this point in time greater. If you could raise $400,000 for an engine, I'd be forever grateful, but we know that's unlikely. So we... The next item is when you think about sending this drone out over to Quinnipiac River or Peters Rock or whatever, all right, so now we've found somebody. How do we get to them? And so we have a Gator. It's called a Gator. It's a John Deere product. We're not necessarily tied to that brand. Any all-terrain vehicle would be fine. Polaris makes one as well. Where now when we locate somebody or we have to get somebody out of the woods or bring equipment to there, we have an all-terrain vehicle. It's about 10 years old. To be quite honest, we could use a second one. We could use something to replace. If you haven't figured out the way that I like to run my department, I like to have duplicates because I believe in continuity. I believe that when the equipment that we have now is out of service, we have something else so that we can continue to operate in the way that we always do. And so he and I have been speaking more and more about this all-terrain vehicle. We'll have enough money to purchase that. And on top of that, we'll have enough money also to purchase a trailer if you don't have right now. So two years ago, when a plane crashed in East Haven, East Haven called over to North Haven and says, "Hey, we need your Gator. We need something to get out to this train, this plane site." It took us 40 minutes to get a trailer from Public Works. No discredit to Public Works, but they're not necessarily have a trailer sitting there ready to deploy to us. Took us 40 minutes, and that was during the day. Had that happened in the weekend, had it happened in the evening, of course, it would have been much longer. So with the donations that the commissioner has been so generous and taken in, we'll look to improve our overall rescue operations quite significantly. Very grateful, and again, thank you, everybody. Very grateful and again, thank you, everybody.
So Peter, thank you. Paul, thank you. And Pat Nuzalov, thank you for being here tonight. It was a remarkable effort. Thank you. Okay, we're going to dispense with item number six and we're going to go to item number seven. Sally has requested two items to be put on the agenda.
Yes, thank you. First, before I get to the two items, I just wanted to echo Mr. Fiede's comments for Colonel Fowler. I thought your speech was excellent. Many of the veterans here know me and know that I've been involved in veterans' events and veterans' issues over the years. George participated in my special recognition for World War II veterans in 2015 in the parade to commemorate the 70th anniversary of the end of World War II. My dad, a World War II veteran, participated. So, you know, I'm honored that, that I had no idea this American Legion Post 76 event was going to be on the, on the agenda when I presented my two items. But a lot of you veterans here know my dedication to veterans' events and veterans' affairs and so I thank you all for your service. But of course, the business of the town has to go on and so I put a couple of items, I presented a couple of items for the agenda and I thank Mr. Fiede, as usual, for putting them on. The first item that I wanted to talk to you about, Mike, was Amazon Construction. Since it began, the construction actually began, I would go up there once a week and, you know, check it out. You can go up the road, the curves around, over the tracks and, you know, you can't get, you know, there's a gate at the end, but you could see from up above, you know, what's going on. So I've been watching it and I hadn't seen it for maybe a month and I went by on Saturday and it's really coming along. It seems like the roof is on and a lot of, you could see all the parking areas taking shape and roadways leading in. So it seems like it's coming along really, really well. And the reason, what I wanted to talk to you about really is twofold. First, you know, when we signed the tax incentive agreement back at the Board of Selectmen meeting in June, June 8th of 2017, we signed a tax incentive agreement and incorporated in the agreement was a restatement of what's in our ordinance that encourages applicants, in this case, Amazon, to consider and make a good faith effort to utilize North Haven businesses during the construction and operation phases. North Haven residents and businesses for, during construction. Now, obviously with the major construction that's going on, I'm sure they had a major outfit, but I would think as, as it progresses, things like landscaping and other interior work, there might be an opportunity for them to hire North Haven businesses, which, again, it was incorporated as part of the agreement. And the reason why I put this on is I remembered what you said at the, what was it? The Economic Development Commission Breakfast. That was a couple of weeks ago. A great breakfast run by Rich LaPresti and I'm sure Val, you worked hard on it, as you do on everything. And you had said something there, you had said that a couple of people from Amazon are assigned to keep you informed and you have a good communication with Amazon. Am I remembering that correctly?
Yes.
So I was just, wanted to remind you about this provision in the agreement that they would make a good faith effort to use North Haven businesses and maybe for you to keep that in the back of your mind as, as the project comes to an end. First, do you know of any type of completion date? I know it started six months late. Do you have any idea when the completion is?
Yes. May of, the end of May of 2019.
Okay, so as, you know, within a few months, there might be projects or parts of the project where North Haven businesses might be of use. So I just wanted to encourage you to remind them of their...
Can I comment on that?
Sure. Of their good faith.
There's already local businesses involved.
Great.
North Haven Tile, as an example, received a tile contract there.
Wonderful.
Carpet tile, so.
Okay. Well, this is why I brought it up. I can't talk to Mike unless it's out of town meeting, so I wanted to make sure that they were living up to it. That's great.
Yeah, and, and what hap, what's happened, ladies and gentlemen, is that with the two corporate contacts that I have from Amazon, I get a lot of calls, people wanting me to make connections, so Amazon has graciously agreed to allow me to give their names to any prospective companies that are looking to make a connection, either pre-opening or post-opening. So we've been, we've been doing that and they have been very cooperative. On the construction side, you know, their general contractor has interviewed all the different trades and there are many North Haven workers working on the site. There are some people that aren't from North Haven also, but, you know, they've made a good faith, good faith effort and it's going to be a great addition to the town. It's going to be a great addition to help boost the small businesses on Washington Avenue. And it's going along very well right now, so it will be done at the end of May, 2019.
Well, when I, yeah, I've commended you many times for bringing Amazon into North Haven. Don't, don't, don't forget that. When I put something on the agenda, it's not because I'm digging for trouble, it's because I want information.
I'm just answering the question, that's fine. We always, we always accommodate Sally, I'm putting items on the agenda, so.
That's right. So, you know, like I said, folks, I can't call Mike up on the phone and say, hey, is Amazon living up to their, their obligation under the agreement to make a good faith effort to hire North Haven businesses? I can't do that. I have to talk about it at a town meeting. So that's really good to hear. And the second part of the Amazon Construction that I wanted to talk to you about was Valley Service Road. I did try to drive out there, but right after the game, there was like this 30-yard huge puddle of water and I'm thinking, ugh, I don't know how deep that is. So I didn't go through it and I didn't drive to the end, so.
It's only about two inches deep, so.
Oh, okay, I should have made it. Thank you. Was that marked?
Yeah.
Thank you. I, you know, I, you know, they always say, if you see a big puddle and you're not sure how deep it is, don't drive through. But it was about 30 yards long, so I didn't go. I have an old car. But anyway, I just wanted to get an update from you on the Valley Service Road connection and whether that would be done on time to coordinate with the, you know, what you say now in May?
No, it won't be. And everyone is aware of that, including the property owner and Amazon. We're, I don't want to say stuck, but we're in the Army Corps of Engineer phase. In order to open that road up, there's some wetlands mitigation that needs to be done and the Amazon group is very comfortable knowing that even though that'll open in May, the facility, this will be done, this road, before the holiday season a year from now. And they're, they're comfortable with that.
Okay, I just, again, I hadn't been able to get out there, so I just wanted to ask about that.
Okay.
Okay, well, that's really good news to know that they are using North Haven businesses. That was the main thrust of why I brought it up. The second thing that I put on the agenda was, I had a couple of issues about the bonding for paving. We had a, I had a question about the town meeting, that we had a special town meeting on October 9th. And one of the items on the agenda was 2 million in bonding for milling and paving. Now, I, you know, we've had this a few times now and I fully support the effort to keep up with improving our roads. I hear from a lot of folks that are very appreciative of it. Nobody likes potholes. I think it's good for economic development and all of that. So, you know, again, I'm supportive of the program, but you had said something that set off an alarm and I didn't say anything at the hearing and I'll explain that in a minute, but let me just give some background. At the special town meeting, again, there was an item to approve 2 million in bonding and you had explained that there's 100, and tell me if I got anything wrong, 160 miles total road and that with 2 million, we could do approximately 10 miles and so it would be like a 16-year cycle. And then Mr. Bard, who we both know, Jay Bard, he got up, I mean, he comes to a lot of meetings, he's a very well-respected citizen. He got up and was concerned that maybe bonding was not the appropriate way to finance milling and paving and that it was an ongoing expense and he said it should be part of the budget. Okay, so then you got back up and you explained that, you know, for major improvements like bonding, for major improvements like paving, bonding was really the only way to go to minimize the tax burden on the citizens. And that, I thought, was an excellent point and you were explaining about how the town was under-leveraged with our debt and there was plenty of room, especially given our AAA rating, to bond. But you were explaining that the bonding for paving is amortized 17 to 20 years. Amortization is just a schedule of payments of principal and interest. And you said that the average road will last for 25 years, so after the 17 to 20-year amortization schedule, the road is still good for five years. And that's what's, I'm sure you have an internal alarm that goes off sometimes when you hear stuff. That went, you know, I thought, uh-oh. But I didn't come up to the microphone at the town meeting, I knew the bonding was going to pass, there were a lot of people there, it was right here in this room. I wanted to get my facts straight. I don't like to just shoot from the hip, so in fairness, I didn't get up and say anything, but I knew that we had discussed this before. And so I went back since that town meeting and I was reviewing the, the March 1st, 2018 Board of Selectmen meeting. And at that meeting, I had put on the agenda the discussion of the paving of Manor Drive. I don't know if you remember this. A citizen, a very respected citizen, retired police officer Steve Smith, had come to me concerned about Manor Drive down in Monowees, which had just been paved. And he said, Sally, I walk that road every day and within a month, there were 45 curb-to-curb cracks in a half-mile stretch of a brand-new road. You got to say something at the next Board of Selectmen meeting. So I did. And Mr. Bodwell was at that meeting and anybody could watch the meeting, it was the March 1st, 2018 Board of Selectmen meeting. You could fast forward to about minute 15 because that's when the discussion took place. And Mr. Bodwell explained that, well, he acknowledged that the cracks were there and he explained that they were reflective cracks and that these cracks are due to the fact that cracks existed in the road prior to repaving and that these prior cracks just resurfaced. And again, he called them reflective cracks. And he went on to say that, that this is because we do not grind up all of the asphalt and regrade. I get, they just basically, they mill on the sides of the road and then repave. And he said that he had talked with other towns and that it was too expensive to grind up the entire road and that it was, for financial reasons, it had to be done this way and that's why these cracks come forward. And then he said at that meeting that the way roads are paved today, they're only paved to last 10 years. And so that's why when you said at the town meeting that, in response to Mr. Bard, that it's okay to bond because the roads last 25 years, I felt that that was a little difficult to reconcile with what Mr. Bodwell had said. You know, you can't say they last 10 years, newly paved roads last 10 years in responding to an explanation for cracks, but then say that the newly paved roads last 25 years in response to a concern about bonding. So I have a suggestion. I want to, you know, move forward. I'm not trying to say that something was done wrong at the town meeting or that the vote was wrong. I don't play like that, Mike, you know that. I want to move forward. So do you want to respond first or do you want to hear my idea for moving forward?
Well, my road was paved 25 years ago and it's still in great shape. So Mr. Bodwell and I disagree on that. Some of the roads, you know, he might be right, may not last 25 years, but a lot of it depends upon the traffic, the rate of speed, the number of cars. There are other roads that last 30 years. So I'm not sure why that this is a big issue here. The reality of this, the situation, folks, is this. And I stand by this comment that I mentioned to Mr. Bard that night. We are not going to book $2 million a year in a budget to pave roads. That's a .6 mil tax increase for every resident. The, the best strategy for us is to bond it over 17 years. That amortizes the cost, it blends out the debt service, it allows us to retire debt, add debt without a significant impact to the town. Now, if we had bonded, if we put $2 million in the budget every year, think about what kind of tax increase that would be. Right out of the gate, it's .67 mils. The Board of Ed wants 3%. We need more in the fire department, the public works department, the police department. We'd be having staggering tax increases every year here. We're not going to do that. So we're always going to bond for roads. And whether they last 15 years, 20 years, 25 years, some of them last 30 years. And that's my statement and that's how I would say it.
Well, I agree with you that bonding is the way to go for paving. I've always supported it. That, that's not what I'm arguing about. I'm not really arguing, I'm, I'm just saying, and at the, at the March 1st, 2018 meeting, and again, anyone could watch it on NHTV or on the town website, when Mr. Bodwell said the roads today are paved only the last 10 years because they're not ground up fully, you know, there was no disagreement to that. That was the accepted answer to the citizens' concern, you know, retired Officer Smith's concern about Manor Drive and why it had 45 cracks a month after being paved. That was the accepted answer. You know, I agree with you that, and I've always supported the paving, but here's what I wanted to suggest moving forward, you know, because it just, it just didn't seem right to have, to say that the roads last 10 years for one explanation and 25 years for another. So what I would like to do moving forward, what I would like to recommend, it's up to you, Mike, we have a new town engineer. I haven't met him yet, I'm sure you have, Bill, I don't know if you've met, met him. You know, Mr. Bodwell is retiring, I believe he's still working part-time, finishing up...
But he's finishing that up, yes.
Yeah, right. So we have a new town engineer and the town engineer is a very important position in the town government. He works along with the Land Use Administrator advising the Planning and Zoning Commission on conditions that should be set for, for development projects. George, you were involved in that years ago, so you know what I'm talking about. You know, you have the, the town attorney who looks after legal issues, the town engineer, you know, is there to make sure that new developments are done in a way that won't be a negative factor for surrounding landowners and whatnot. And so I think it's a very important position and I would certainly like to meet him and maybe the town would. So I was going to suggest that maybe he, along with Lynn Sidoski, the Director of Public Works, who's also a civil engineer, could come to a meeting sometime in the future to have a discussion about how we're milling and paving. If Mr. Bodwell's position was, because we don't grind up the entire road, we don't mill the whole road, that's why these cracks happen so often, maybe we should look at, well, what is the difference in costs? He did say it's more expensive to grind it up the whole road, which of course, it's more work. But I, I would think that for future bonding town meetings, you know, having that option to say, well, if we do it this way, it's going to cost this much and we'll only be able to do this number of miles in roads, but they'll last longer, you know, and have a better evaluation. That, that's, again, Mike, I'm not trying to say that something was done wrong at the town meeting or you were trying to mislead people. I don't play like that, you know that, Michael. I'm trying to move forward and think of what we could do to better inform the citizens about how long, how we mill and pave and how long these roads should last and what is the best way to bond, because I agree bonding is the best way.
So what we can do, the next time there's a town meeting on bonding, you know, I'd be more than happy to have the engineer come in and talk about the different methods and the cost discrepancies. So we probably won't have a town meeting on bonding until maybe till this...
For another year, yeah.
Another year or so, but, yeah, I'll do that.
That's, that's basically what I came up with because there seemed to be an inconsistency there, you know, when I compared the two, the March Board of Selectmen meeting with the October town meeting. So that's it. So that's it.
Like Washington Avenue as an example, or Maple Avenue, Church Street in front of Town Hall. A lot of truck traffic, you know, heavy trucks. Well, that's not, that road's not gonna last twenty-five years. But most residential roads, you know, with moderate traffic will last twenty-five, twenty-two, twenty-seven years. So it all depends. You know, Clintonville Road's heavily traveled. You know, that was paved a few years ago. That may last twenty years, twenty-two years.
Well, that's a state road.
It's a state road.
Maybe we should evaluate the town roads that have a lot of traffic and think about doing the more extensive milling and paving for those to increase their, because maybe it would be better to do them the right way once every twenty-five years than do the lesser milling and have to do those heavy-trafficked roads, you know, twice in twenty years. That, you know, so that's.
So we can certainly have the engineer present the two different options. That's kind of your question, right?
Yeah, that's what I thought would be a good idea moving forward. I would like a little bit more information, because, you know, it's not like, you know, ten years is a big, which is what Mr. Bodwell said, is a big difference from the twenty-five years that you said. So I think we could, you know, move forward and approach it that way. I think that would be good.
We'll do that.
But I do fully support your bonding project, Michael. I wasn't questioning that.
All right. So the question is, will we have the engineer? Yes, I'll have the engineer come up.
What's the best way? No, the real question is, what's the best way to pave our roads, to make them last longer?
Well, that's what I'm saying. We'll have the engineer come up and present the two different options.
And then I can meet him.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So we'll go, item, next item, which is.
I don't think that's, I think that's not a bad suggestion either. I know the other thing that's always come up, too, that, you know, that Mike's talked about is, in which people have probably talked to you about as well, is about which roads are selected for, you know, and they do that on that grading system.
Right.
But, you know, to say it, but to understand, you know, say it is one thing, but maybe to understand it is something else. So again, maybe at the same time, we can, you know, learn more about how the roads are selected, you know, how they're graded. Because, because you're right, because as Mike was saying and you were saying, you know, there, some roads are more heavily trafficked, and, you know, like the road I live on is, you know, gets a lot of trucks cutting through it.
The people on my little street are always saying, Sally, when are they gonna do our street? You know, I don't know. There's a list, and I understand the ranking system.
Okay.
So would you like me to do number eight? I'd love to do it.
All right, sure.
Okay. This is something we have every year, I believe.
Yes.
Resolved that the Town of North Haven Board of Selectmen may enter into with and deliver to the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Service and Public Protection Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security any and all documents which it deems to be necessary or appropriate, and further resolved that Michael J. Frieda, as First Selectman of the Town of North Haven, is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the Town of North Haven, and to do and perform all acts and things which he deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents.
Yeah, and this resolution, just to explain it, to simplify what sometimes can be very complicated language, is a collaborative effort between myself and the Fire Chief. There are these grants that are out there for public safety, hazard mitigation, whatever it might be, equipment. Last year, we received about $12,000. These grants usually are about $12,000. So Fire Chief Janushevsky submits the paperwork. Part of the parameters are the CEO of the municipality has to sign off on it and endorse it, and I'm very hopeful that we can get another $12,000 like we did last year to support emergency management in the Fire Department. So that's what this is about. Okay, so.
I'll make a motion to move ahead.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Okay, number nine. I, this is another item that I had requested on the agenda. I will move for the appointment of Danielle C. Morphy, 194 Clintonville Road, to the Community Services Commission to fill the unexpired term of Carol Van Seschet, term to expire December 31, 2019.
I do not support this nomination.
Okay.
So let me repeat. I do not support the nomination. I've spoken to the DTC Chair, Kathy Grant, and I have a goal to get more unaffiliates on some of these elected boards. This is a critical board, and I don't support the nomination.
Okay. Can we have?
I'm in agreement, I'm in agreement on that as well. I'd like to see some other potential candidates for this position.
Can I comment?
Of course.
Yes. Well, first, I think it's important to stress that this is filling an unexpired term of a Democrat. You know, Carol, I believe, resigned at our August meeting. I think she moved out of town. And I do understand your concerns about unaffiliates. And in fact, back in April, when Dr. McFederin, Peter McFederin, a friend of mine, a longstanding Democrat on the Library Board, he was on there for decades, a very progressive Democrat who did a great service to the Library Board, left because I think he and his wife Letty, who you know, moved out of town.
Yes.
You know, I certainly supported the appointment of Mr. Black, who wasn't unaffiliated at that time, you know, at the time of filling that vacancy. So, you know, I've been pretty cooperative in recent months with filling vacancies that were made by Democrats with unaffiliates, whereas whenever a Republican resigns, for example, on May 3, when Mr. Tenedine resigned from Inland Wetlands, you know, I had no problem filling that spot with another Republican, Mr. Bumstead. And also on May 3, Mary Mann, a Democrat, resigned from Conservation, and Mr. Lewis was put on as an unaffiliated. So we have put many unaffiliated, we've agreed to put unaffiliates on in place of Democrats that had resigned. This actually, it's my understanding that this appointment for Danielle Morphy goes back to September. I think the Chairman of the Democratic Town Committee first approached you, and you had asked that, again, I'm getting this from, I can't talk to you about it, but it's my understanding that you had asked that effort be made to find another Democrat. And in deference to your suggestion, the North Haven Democratic Town Committee did put on its agenda for the October meeting this appointment, and, you know, the agenda goes out well in advance of the meeting, and at the October meeting, Danielle was the unanimous choice to fill this unexpired term, which, again, was vacated by Carol, a Democrat. You know, I've, you understand my obligation. You've been the third selectman. But I don't just feel an obligation to present this appointment. I personally feel that it would be a good appointment, and I'll tell you why. I've known Danielle, and I've worked with her on a few different issues, and I gotta say, I have not always agreed with her. Just as there are conservative Republicans and moderate Republicans, there are moderate Democrats, which I consider myself, and progressive Democrats, which I consider Danielle. We have not always agreed, but I have never doubted her determination to help the town and her enthusiasm to help the town. And I also have to say that the Community Services Commission has a special place in my heart, because it's where I got my start. In 1983, I was appointed to the Community Services Commission, and I served until I was elected to the Board of Finance in 1985. And I was very young, probably twenty-five or twenty-six. I was young and idealistic. Now I'm old and bitter, Michael.
What are you bitter about?
I don't know.
Why are you so bitter?
You know, my father, my father told me, when you get older, you're gonna be bitter, and, you know. And I never believed him, but, you know, I was young and enthusiastic, and I loved my years on the Community Services Commission. I remember I was appointed as the liaison for the North Haven High School. I was only a few years older than the kids. We were running a Safe Rides program in conjunction with the Police Department, and I just loved it. And I could see Danielle being involved in things like that. She has two young children. A lot of what the Community Services Commission does affects children, and I think she would do a really great job. And, you know, she's one of, she would be one of a nine-person commission controlled by Republicans. And I understand that this government, you're, how can I put this? You're the center of the orbit, and you should be. You are. But, you know, look, you're the CEO. You've been re-elected with huge margins. I know you're the center of this orbit of commissions, but do you really think putting one progressive Democrat on a nine-person commission is gonna send your administration swirling out of control, out of orbit? I don't think so. And I also think that when you put a person like Danielle in a position of responsibility, they quickly learn the wisdom of prudent compromise. Now, you and I are seasoned politicians, seasoned elected officials. We know that compromise is essential for government, you know, and especially in a democracy. This is a democracy here in North Haven. It is not a dictatorship. And I think that Danielle would be, would learn a lot and be a great addition. And again, I want to say she's filling an unexpired term that'll end at the end of nineteen. If your concerns about her prove valid, well, then the Board at that time can vote not to reappoint her.
You see, folks, I have someone who's been asking to be on this as an unaffiliate since 2011, and the unaffiliates represent fifty-two percent of the registered voters here in North Haven. The unaffiliates need to be represented on the volunteer commissions, because by town charter, on the elected positions, it's strictly Republicans and Democrats. So I, my goal is to get an unaffiliate on this, on this board, another unaffiliate. And I've had someone that's been in abeyance for seven years. So I don't support this nomination.
But once again, with the Library Board, when a Democrat resigned, we filled it with an unaffiliated. When the commission, what was Mary Mann's? Hold on a second. Mary Mann resigned from the Conservation Commission, we agreed to fill it with Mr. Lewis, an unaffiliated. We've been going along with that, but, you know, the, twice, the Democratic Town Committee has endorsed Ms. Morphy for the position. I know that she is fairly well-known in town for her opposition to the synthetic turf fields. She had organized the petition requesting a town meeting. But let me say, you know, that a lot of other area towns struggled with the turf issue. And our own Conservation Commission chaired by you, Davis, who you have great respect for, I know, issued a public policy statement stating that they were in favor of holding off on the synthetic turf until the federal study was complete. So it's not like her position was that crazy. And I think, I'm bringing it up only because that, I think, is what she is known for, because she spoke about it so many times publicly. And I know that she filed a Freedom of Information complaint against the town because she had made many requests for, under the Freedom of Information Act, for information for the Middle School Building Committee. And she filed a Freedom of Information complaint that was heard by the Freedom of Information Commission in Hartford, and the town was found in violation of the Freedom of Information Act. And perhaps that wound hasn't healed, but I don't think that a person should be punished for standing up for their statutory rights. I understand your need for unaffiliates, and I've cooperated twice in recent, in recent months and done exactly that. I just feel that I have to strongly advocate on behalf of the DTC, which it's not only my obligation as the minority party representative, but as I said, I think that Danielle would be a great addition to the commission. And the final point I want to make is something that I remember that happened last year, Michael. During the campaign, Mr. Alan Sturts was opposing you for the first selectman spot, and there was a forum over at Ulbricht Steel. I remember it was god-awful early in the morning. You know, it's not the one where Bill and I participated at the rec center. This was one with just you and Mr. Sturts, very early in the morning over at Ulbricht Steel. Do you remember what I'm talking about? There was a forum there. And you both got an opportunity to give opening remarks, and in your opening remarks, you said that you work across party lines and you cooperate across party lines. You mentioned specifically working with Kathy Grant, and, you know, I just want to remind you that you had made that pledge to work across, across party lines. There'll be other opportunities for other affiliates. Many affiliates occupy positions in our, in our commissions. But I really believe that Danielle is qualified and willing and able. She'd be a great addition, and I wish that you would reconsider your opposition. Again, keeping in mind that we did fill two Democratic vacancies with unaffiliates earlier, as I pointed out, on Conservation and the Library Board. So I would ask for both of you to reconsider that you are against this appointment.
I mean, I appreciate your advocacy for her, but, you know, again, I'm not, you know, I have to, you know, I think, I think, you know, we've got a stated, stated plan here, I think, to try to expand the, the number of unaffiliated people who volunteer their services and be on different commissions and boards. So, I mean, maybe there'll be some other opportunities for her in the future. But I'm not comfortable with that right now at this time.
Our charter does, does say that, you know, we have to have Democrats and Republicans on the elected boards, the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance, Board of Ed, Police Commission, Fire Commission, Planning and Zoning, I think those are, am I missing any? There are no, huh?
Wetlands.
Wetlands. There are no unaffiliates there. And there's, there, these other appointed commissions are mentioned in our charter, but there's nothing in there that talks about guaranteeing unaffiliates. The only guarantee is, is Republican and Democrat, you know, minority party representations on the elected board. But, you know, you know, obviously, half of our electorate is unaffiliated, and they choose to be. But there's nothing in our charter that requires us to put a certain number of unaffiliates on boards and commissions, the way they do require a certain number of Republicans and Democrats on the elected boards. So you're.
And that's true, but I think it's a way to be further inclusive.
Right, but your argument, especially when I agreed to the unaffiliates for the previous two times, does not seem to hold much water for me, because we've done that. We have, we have, we have given up, we have given up Democratic seats on commissions to unaffiliates. We never give up a Republican seat to put an unaffiliated. A Republican vacancy is always replaced by a Republican. So I find, you know, your argument that we need to put an unaffiliated in this particular position disturbingly un.
I just mentioned, we have someone, seven years, that's been wanting to get on this commission as an unaffiliated, a person that's raised over half a million dollars for charitable organizations in the greater New Haven area, a person who's been a North Haven resident for twenty-five years, who's very well-respected and does a lot for things like the Providence Club, has done tremendous work, has been wanting, been on this, on this commission for seven years.
Well, the appointments are only for three years, so there had to have been at least two cycles where that person could have been appointed during your administration.
Many times, you know, we, we've gone with your suggestions about ninety-nine percent of the time. When I sat in your seat, that's why I appreciate what you're doing here tonight.
Yes, thank you.
I tried to make the same argument, but when I sat in Sally's seat, seventeen Republicans got bumped off that night. Seventeen, without any consideration. So I appreciate what you're trying to accomplish, and I respect what you're trying to accomplish, because I was in your position years ago.
That's why I said it in the beginning.
On this particular board and commission, I do not support the nominee.
Well, I think it's a tragic mistake on your part. Yes, you've gone along with other. Yes, you've gone along with other Democratic appointments, but I have gone along with losing Democrats on these appointed boards to unaffiliates. You know, I just think that, you know, it's time for a Democrat to be replaced by a Democrat. That's how I feel. And I think you're, I think that there's some sort of animosity or whatever. I don't know what exactly the issue is. I know that Ms. Morphy has been a controversial figure to some because of some of her positions. And again, you know, I don't think that should be the yardstick for determining whether somebody is eligible in this government to serve. I think that if they're willing to serve, they should serve. And that this is to fill a Democratic spot, and it should be filled by a Democrat. We've been more than accommodating and allowing other unaffiliates to fill Democratic vacancies. I think that's a mistake. It's very discouraging to me, Michael, I have to say. But, okay.
And, so I think we've thoroughly discussed this item.
Yes.
And I think, I don't think there, even if you make a motion to move the item, there won't be a second.
There doesn't need to be a second.
So, I think we need to move on.
As you know, Bill, in the charter, you do not need a second on the Board of Selectmen, do you, Mr. Frida? Do you need a second?
No.
No. So, I will, again, make my motion, as I am entitled to do, to appoint Daniel C. Morphy, 194 Clintonville Road, to the Community Services Commission to fill the unexpired term of Carol French-Schet, term to expire December 31, 2019. I have so moved.
All right. No second?
There doesn't need to be a second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Motion passes.
Motion was defeated.
Motion was defeated.
Yes. Motion passes? Wait, what?
The nays pass. The nays pass.
The motion was defeated, but, yeah.
We will...
Bill, I suggest you read the charter. There's no need for a second.
I was, as you were talking, so...
Okay.
But again, it falls under Robert's Rules of Order, and I believe it, I believe it's, the charter is silent on that regard, Sally.
The charter is silent on what regard?
In terms of the need for a second or not.
No, it is not.
So...
Do you have the charter? I'll show you.
I do. Show me, when we're done after the meeting.
Do you have a charter with you, please? Can I have it?
I always carry it with me.
Give me it, give me it.
Those are for elected positions.
No, this is for a motion, Bill.
Those fall under Robert's Rules of Order?
Chapter 4, Section 404. Any motion made by a selectman shall not require a second. Is that clear, Bill? Page 15.
I've looked into page 15 before.
There was no second, so...
No, it's not needed. I just wanted to vote on them. It was on the agenda. I made the motion. It does not need a second per Section 404. And we voted, and it was denied. So, I just, now, we're moving on to the next item. But I just wanted, Bill, to be clear, and I'm sure you know that, Michael, because we've talked about this, that motions do not need to be seconded on the Board of Selectmen.
Right, I acknowledge that.
My very fir-, right, okay.
Look, I want to say that, you know, there's going to be other boards and commission slots coming up. Feel free to continue to present the candidate. On this particular board, I have someone else in mind. Seven years, I want to repeat it. This person's wanting to get on this board, and she's an outstanding candidate.
Well, the vacancy's been since...
And you won't need to second it, so...
Well, you could, the vacancy's been since August, so if she's been waiting seven years, you've wasted three months, you know. But, okay.
All right.
So, where are we now?
Property tax refunds.
Okay. I'll move the property tax refunds as listed in the agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 That's the case now. We won't need to second any of these.
But we'll continue, though, to...
It's been our custom to second, Bill.
In that section, actually...
There's no need to be cute about it. It's always been our custom to second motions, but I have a right to read the motion and have it voted on.
After the meeting, we can discuss that section and the intent of not seconding, which relates to different...
The first selectman said he already acknowledged that...
Doesn't relate to unelected positions.
Okay. So, here's what I'd like to do. I'd like to make a motion to amend the original motion, okay, to eliminate that motion.
What motion?
The motion for property tax, because I want a second on the property tax refund.
Oh, sure. All right. I will move the property tax refunds as listed in the agenda.
Okay.
I will second it.
And there's a second. All right. We have a motion, and we have a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Item number 11, the next rated-a-meeting of the Board of Selectmen is Thursday, the 6th. And Valerie, do we have the date on the Christmas tree lighting?
Yes, it's the 2nd.
The 2nd.
Just the 2nd.
So, our next Board of Selectmen meeting will be after the Christmas tree lighting, which is Sunday, December 2nd. So, we want to invite all of our North Haven residents to come to the green that particular evening for the lighting of the Christmas tree, which is in conjunction with a lot of activities over at the Park and Recreation Department. And Santa Claus...
Santa Claus will be there.
Will be there. Will be there that night. Did you want to say anything else on that?
No, no. I just thought it would be a good idea to remind people, and thank you for taking my suggestion and reminding them about it, because at our next meeting, it would have been over.
Okay.
Okay.
So, with that being said, item number 12, public comment. Public comment. Mary White.
Mary White, Summer Lane. The first question I have is relative to the pods at Cinemark Theater. Mike, could you tell us how many pods are available over there?
Pods?
You know...
Oh, pads?
Pads, I'm sorry.
Three, I'm sorry.
There's three.
A pad is a development reference for a parcel of property that can be developed. So, there's three pads, which are three individual parcels.
That is excluding Chick-fil-A?
That's right.
Okay. Can you tell us, I know you can't reveal anything, but could you tell us if the thought process is to have those three pads to all be eateries?
We're working...
I'm just curious.
So, I'll share with you some work in progress, and I'll share it on live TV, but it should not be construed that it's a project that is going to be finalized soon, because it may not happen. So, the work in progress is, on the three pads, we have an interested hotel operator that wants to go there. Hotels like to be next to theaters. And in the Montreux section, which that would be considered, down through the years, I've had a lot of feedback from major corporations, like Medtronics as an example, Mary, that they would not, when they bring executives in from outside the state, they wouldn't, they don't put them in the current hotel in North Haven. They're in sort of either extended stays or a hotel brand that's sort of an upper-brand level than what we may have here. So, on the three pads, there'll be another eatery, there could possibly be a hotel, and there could be a retail store of some sort there. That's the work in progress right now.
Okay, thanks. I was just curious.
Okay.
So, the next question I have is relative to the grant the town received for Vanacore Field. I believe that was for a concession stand and bathrooms. And I believe, or I know, our representatives, Senator Ellen Fasano and Representative Dave Jacarino, helped the town get the grant. I was curious to know who within the town filled out the paperwork and was involved with the application to get that grant? Which is kind of curious.
That always goes through our finance department on grant applications.
Finance department?
Yes.
So, like Ed Swinkowski?
His, Ed, not necessarily Ed directly, but his staff would do that.
Okay.
And in a Board of Ed grant application, there's a lot of feedback that they, he would receive, or our finance department would receive, from the Board of Ed group in terms of exactly what is trying to be accomplished. In this case, 4,800 square feet of updated concession stand.
Okay. Do you know if the town is limited to how many grants of this kind they can apply for and/or receive in a calendar year?
To my knowledge, there's no limitations. The limitations are, if a grant is available, you can apply for that grant, even though you may have received the grant the previous month.
Okay. So, the purpose of those questions is to bring up the amenities that we know the turf fields need, such as, but not limited to, scoreboards, bleachers, concession stand, bathrooms, press box, ticket collection booth, et cetera. So, my question is, can the town begin to work on filling out whatever paperwork to get a grant for some of those? Or maybe, would it be easier, since we already obtained a grant for concession stands and bathrooms, right?
Yes.
Would it be easier to say, let's go for that for the turf fields, since we've already were successful in receiving one?
So, your question, Mary, is designed to file for a grant for what on the fields?
I, well, any of those things, but I was specifically wondering if the concession stand with bathrooms, if we could apply for that, since we were already successful in receiving a grant for Vanacore Field.
Yeah, I think if there was a grant that illustrated that that was an opportunity, we would certainly apply for it. Now, what we don't know is the decision-makers for the grant, if there's many municipalities applying, and we just had received a grant, you know, that we might not have the weighted value point system that someone else who hadn't ever received a grant for that. So, that would probably come into play.
Okay. And then, so, could we then apply for some other amenities, such as the bleachers?
Yes.
Or the scoreboards, you know? And maybe, since it's different, we could have weight, you know, to our requests?
So, if those, if there were those amenities that were part of any upcoming grant, we would certainly apply. We could, yes.
So, how do we find out when these grants are available or...
Well, we would find out, you know, the state website, there's a section there that illustrates grants. We'd find out from our state legislators. We'd find out from our finance department, who is always looking for different grants. We may find out from Lynn Sadowski, who periodically peruses if there's a grant available. So, it's kind of a matter of us paying attention to what's out there.
Okay. Because I know the Board of Ed is definitely interested in having some of these amenities funded.
Yes.
I know, we, when we spoke a month or so ago, I had asked you if we could, in the future, use the payment from Quinnipiac, the money in lieu of taxes, for the purchase of amenities. And you had said, yes, but not next year, because those payments are going to go towards the fire department's training facility. But then you said after that. So, I was just kind of wondering if, you know, it's a couple of years away, so I thought maybe in between, if we could go for the state grant.
So, what we're doing, Mary, is, and I did say all that, you're right. I've met with the president of Quinnipiac University. I've spoken to Quinnipiac about our desire to build a fire training facility. And we don't know what the pilot will be, but in concept, Quinnipiac likes the suggestion that I brought to them about using the pilot money to help the fire department build a training facility.
Okay.
With that being said, I've also met with the superintendent of schools, spoken with the athletic director, Steve Blumenthal. And sometime in December, I'll be assembling a meeting, either in December with Dr. Cronin or in January with the new superintendent. And my goal is to have memorialized from the school system athletic department what we need to do. As an example, I went to girls' night and boys' night, senior night, soccer. So, I'm on the field, and I see the need for bleachers. So, seeing it with the bleachers that were there, I can immediately see we needed an upgrade. So, DeMeo Field, down through the years, they've needed dugouts there. So, I want a list of things that need to be done. And then, we're either going to try to fund those through fundraising, donations, local capital improvement, or Quinnipiac pilot payment, like I mentioned the last time we spoke about this.
Where's Pete? I said, where's Pete? You said donations.
Oh, yeah, right. So, that's the plan. The plan is to get everything up and running.
Okay, great. Thank you. So, the next question I have is relative to the police radio towers. We had heard at a previous Board of Selectmen meeting, a resident had a concern about the safety of those towers. And you had said, you take that concern seriously, and you turn the matter over to the state. So, my question is, can you tell us if the state has reviewed those radio towers? And have they come up with any conclusions? Has the installation of other police radio towers on the schools, has that stopped? Has it continued? We was just looking for an update.
Well, my understanding is the state did send a report, and there's no problem with that tower at Ridge Road School.
There's no problem.
The state weighed in on that, yes.
Okay. So, things are moving along, then?
Yes.
With the construction?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that. So, next, I'd like to give an update on the fire department's statistics, as I am known for doing. The fire commission met on October 23rd. And since they last met, alarms year-to-date, this time in 2017, were 3,540. And alarms as of October 22nd were 3,784. The difference is an increase of 244 alarms. Five years ago, in 2013, at this time, there were 3,312 alarms. And so, the difference over the past five years is an increase of 472 alarms. Again, there is a trend of an increase in alarms. So, they provided ALS intercept, which means our paramedic went to the hospital, on 12 different occasions. And so, that is when AMR did not provide a paramedic in the ambulance. They responded to the highway 16 different times. 63% of the calls since the last meeting were EMS-related. Since their last meeting, they were unable to send resources on at least one occasion, because there were no resources available. There were 367 incidents since the last meeting. 103 incidents occurred at the same time, which accounts for 28% overlapping incidents. Let's see. Okay. So, he said the budget last year at this time is 37%. Now, the budget at this time is 35.7%. Since the last Board of Fire Commissioners meeting, they collected $103,302 in permit fee collections. This fiscal year puts them at $216,896. Money since they began to collect fees about 19 or 20 months ago, $1.4 million. The fire marshal's office did 39 inspections conducted, were conducted since the last fire commission meeting. 12 re-inspections for a total of 51. Seven code violations were found, 47 planned reviews and permits. He talked about time-consuming projects. Amazon, he said they are there nearly on a daily basis, meeting with staff, looking at fire mains, hydrants, risers, sprinklers, that are starting to be installed and have to be flushed out and inspected as being installed. There is a storage water tank that also has the inspector there quite often. He said Clintonville Road, North Haven Senior Living, that project is well underway. That keeps them busy with inspections. Training on the new truck continues. He talked about the FEMA grant. He said that they only received the grant for the washer dryer. The chief spoke with the FEMA representative that morning, who encouraged the chief to submit applications again for both grants. Scoring last year was good. First, it's via computer. If high enough, it goes to a peer review panel. North Haven received good scores. There were just departments that scored higher. The chief will submit both applications for those grants by the end of the week. The town will not know if they are successful until the second quarter next year, 2019. The fire department budget workshop will be held on Saturday, January 19th, at 9:15 in the morning. The public hearing for the budget will be April 2nd, with the annual town meeting on May 6th. Okay. So, my question is, next is, will the budget workshops still be recorded by NHTV?
Yes.
And they will not be live, though? They will not be live?
That's a good question. Maybe we can work that out, Valerie, where they could be live, okay? So...
Okay.
Yeah, we'll definitely look at that, Mary.
Okay. And I just wanted to ask, will there still be no public comment permitted at the budget workshops?
Right now, that's the plan. Board of Finance has been very consistent, Mary, on the fact that they want to, they're absorbing the information at the same time. And the Board of Finance has been consistent to say that there's two public meetings where the people can weigh in, that are televised, and they're live meetings. So, that's the position right now.
Okay. Thank you. Let's see. So, on Thursday, December 13th, at 6:30, upstairs, in the annex, the Board of Education meeting room, there will be a Board of Education meeting. Of interest to some is a presentation or a report to be given by the Chair of the Turf Fields Ad Hoc Athletic Committee. Fields Ad Hoc Athletic Committee. Many questions are supposed to be answered, including the rental fee schedules, signage, access, et cetera. Let's see, um, all, okay, so tomorrow, there will be an exciting Board of Finance meeting here in this room at 7 o'clock. Why is this meeting exciting? It will be exciting because we were told at this meeting, the chair will present the fire department recommendations from the new fire committee. And that new fire committee is made up of the fire chief, deputy fire chief, the Board of Finance Chair, Board of Finance Member Mike Hallahan, and Finance Director Ed Swinkowski. So, let's see. And then, last but not least, a little public service announcement. We're supposed to get some snow on Thursday evening, possibly four inches, and I saw, I thought this was very interesting. So, Gil Simmons from News Channel 8, he was talking about, we all need to get our winter window washer fluid in there, because most of us have the standard summer window washer fluid, and he was talking about, if you don't switch it before the temperature drops, it's just going to freeze when you're trying to drive and your windshield's a mess. So, he says, head on out to those auto places, to all the auto stores, and get your winter window washer fluid. Okay, thank you, that's all.
Full of information for us.
Full of information tonight.
She mentioned the Board of Finance meeting. I did get the agenda in the mail over the weekend, and the report from the fire department committee wasn't specifically on there. Is it under Old Business? I mean, it is going to, I didn't see it on the agenda, but it will be presented?
I believe so. I think Mr. Hallahan is asking.
How would we be done under Old Business, then? Because I was expecting to see it specifically referenced.
Old Business, yeah.
Okay, there we go.
Will you make a comment?
Well, we have someone standing here, George, okay?
Can I go first, George?
Sure, why not?
Mark Genovese, Ridge Road. First, I'm the same age as Sally, and I'm neither old or bitter. I came in late, and I missed the American Legion presentation. I'm part of the American Legion. Excuse me. I'm scared to death talking in front of people. I'd like to thank Mike for the memorial this weekend. My brother enjoyed it immensely, and he was the guy who ran up and held the flag up.
Yes, that was very nice of him.
And he thanked you for singling him out.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, Mark and I graduated from North Haven High together.
So, I'm not old, and I'm not bitter.
Well, maybe my, maybe my, well, first, that was said in jest, but maybe my oldness and bitterness is because I'm in politics and you're not. That could be.
George, as you're walking up to the microphone, even though Mark just said he's afraid of speaking in public, he was not afraid, and showed tremendous bravery for 38-plus years serving the North Haven Police Department. His last rank was a captain, and let's give him a round of applause. Thank you for that brave remark and that public service. And those, those police officers in North Haven Police Department still look up to you like a father figure. George Buehler.
If I could just add, Mark, Mark also served in the Marine Corps, and served in the Middle East during a very volatile time in a very brave fashion, so he should be commended. You didn't, you probably didn't know, I remembered that, Marco, but I do.
So, now, we have a man, Mr. George Buehler, the oldest member of the American Legion, has been part of the fabric of this community for how many years?
56 years.
56 years. Just celebrated, what, his 73rd wedding anniversary?
Yes, yes. Both 97.
Wow.
But I'm not here for that. I'm here for the town of North Haven, which I still admire, and I'd love to be here yet if I wasn't up at Ashland Village, because of our commitment to the not being able to go up and downstairs. But I would like to thank the town and the Legion post for what they did. I think it was the greatest. I've been to 70 services on Veterans Day, and I've never seen such a wonderful crowd. When I rode up, I couldn't believe it. I said, something must be going on here. It was a service for that dedication of that beautiful monument. What I wanted to say about that, when I took over the parade in 1989, Joe asked me to take the parade over because Jimmy had a heart attack and died. Well, five years later, I asked a twins, the Giordano brothers, who both were in Vietnam War, to be my parade marshals. They did it. One joined the Legion, the other didn't. But anyways, thank you to town of North Haven for this beautiful service, and this program is unbelievable. I know half the people in this town here, half of them. And you know, we didn't get recognition for the North Haven Register? That's what peeved me off. I called them up and said, why the hell weren't you there? They couldn't answer me. We have people that lived in North Haven, because I know I went around collecting, that were on the board of the North Haven Register. So, there's no excuse.
George, to that point, Nick Mastriani's here, and he asked me to call Channel 8, which we did. They did not come, but Stephanie Simone reached out for me today, and she wants pictures of the event that they're going to post on the website.
Oh, good.
At Channel 8 News.
Good.
So, Val, we've got to get together, and we'll have to email that to Stephanie, okay?
Thank you.
But thank you.
Thank you for the job, Mike, that you're doing in this town.
Thank you, George.
Okay?
Okay.
No shit.
Okay.
Thank you, people.
Jenny Caldwell, Kimberly Circle. First, I have a quick question. With the Valley Service Road not opening for a year, and Amazon opening up before, is all the traffic then going on and off Washington Avenue?
Probably, yes.
So, is there going to be any, looking at safety issues around that happening, especially for roads that funnel in and out of that area?
So, there's a road that was built in the north side of the parking lot, which exits out to Defco Park. That's calculated to take 20% of the traffic out of the site that way, to have a double access or exit point out onto Washington Avenue. Amazon's peak season is in the, during the holiday season. So, there's nothing we can do about this, because we're stuck with Army Corps of Engineers right now, and the wetlands mitigation. So, yes, there's going to be probably a few months where the traffic will be on Washington Avenue until Valley Service Road gets built.
So, which road is it off of Washington that Amazon will be coming off of?
So, if, it's the, it's the road, as we're traveling north on Route 5.
Yeah.
Right past the Volvo dealership, that long road that goes into the site.
On that left side.
Left side.
Like, so, up across from where Sarah is, that road? Or is it the one farther back by where, closer to Conex?
So, it's probably, it's right next to 375 Washington Avenue.
Well, the original entrance to Pratt Whitney.
Yeah, the original.
That's the street from Family Street. Yep.
Right there, it's the original entrance.
The original entrance to Pratt Whitney.
Pratt Whitney is, it goes before me.
Yeah, you just said, if I may just talk to Mike about something, you said 20% would, I go Defco Park. When I was up at the site the other day, I did go down Defco Park, and I saw that right away that you were talking about. It's right before, I think it was Konig LLC?
Yeah, right after over.
And it's gated over, but I could see they built it, and there's nice walls on either side. I would, I wish, because if they leave Defco Park, which is much further north, they're going to go to Exit 13, I would think. So, that would be the best way, as far as keeping traffic.
Difficult, and they, they exit up there.
Yes, yes, I'm aware. Yes, it's further north from.
I'm just worried about, there are multiple residential streets, including mine.
Right.
That funnel onto Washington Avenue, don't have lights.
Right.
And, and it's already difficult to come across those roads to get on Washington Avenue. And, you know, if you increase the traffic significantly, the possibility of accidents or issues are going to increase. And especially where I live, Sarah is there, and there are vans with people with disabilities coming in and out. So, I don't know if there's any planning on whether there's a possibility of adding some stoplights or something to prevent accidents on that road for people trying to get in and out. Just, you don't have to answer that now, I just, you know, when, when you, when you mentioned about the road not opening up Valley Service, it just.
Well, maybe during the gap before Valley Service is opened, we could encourage Amazon to use Defco Park more and use Exit 13 more during that gap, because that would avoid, I mean, Defco Park comes out very north on.
Is there a connection between the two?
There is now, yes.
Really?
Yes, that's why Defco Park is so close to Exit 13. I think the only residential street that it would, they would pass if they went Defco Park would be Scrub Oak. Then after that, it's, you know, so I wonder if there's any way you could impress upon them to increase that 20% usage of Defco during that gap period to help alleviate some of the Washington Avenue traffic that Ms. Caldwell seems to be concerned about. Because I think once Valley Service is opened, it will help a lot.
Yes.
But it's just a thought, you know? I was always hoping they would use, excuse me, 13 more than 11.
Well, that will be the plan eventually, too. But we want to take, when, when Valley Service Road is constructed, we want to take a lot of that traffic out towards the west and out towards 22, towards 22, to get on 91 South.
Right.
So, that will happen, it's just not going to happen by May.
Yeah, because I think if they're going to go northbound, they're going to go that way anyhow.
What?
If they're going to go northbound.
Yeah, but they could also go southbound on.
But I think everything northbound would go that way, no matter what.
Yeah, that's why he's saying 20%, but I was just wondering if during the gap, they could, you know.
Also a better entrance for the truck.
Mr. Pedeza's a very persuasive guy. He could say, during this time before Valley Services opened, you know, try to alleviate. Last thing we want is a lot of traffic between Exit 12 and Broadway, you know?
You know, back in, back in the 80s and 70s, 80s and 90s, we had 8,000 people working there.
Right.
8,000. Redwood. So, we're going to have 3,000 working here now. So, you know, I mean, we can look at this certainly, to your point, Sally, but I'm not concerned about it at all, because when Valley Service will open up, and with, with one-third of the jobs that Pratt Whitney had, we're adding a major access point out. So, it'll end up happening, but it's just not going to happen in May.
Okay, I'm just mentioning it because I live up there, and it's, you know, it's difficult to get out, and I get concerned about accidents, and that's the only reason I'm bringing it up.
I do, I understand.
And those 8,000 folks worked three shifts, so two out of the three shifts were coming in and out when, you know, the town was, Downs Business Day was over. And, and Amazon does have, what, there's 248 truck docks, you know? So, that's, Pratt Whitney didn't have anything like, like that. So, but you're right, the number of employees at Pratt was a lot more, but you have to keep in mind, there was three shifts. We used to go and watch the shift come out every day, that's, there wasn't much to do back then.
Yes.
You remember, Mark?
That 330 shift looked up.
Right.
The other thing I just, I want to comment on is the, the appointment for the Community Services Commission, and I'm going to share Sally's disappointment with the board's decision not to appoint Danielle Morphy. And, you know, the idea that it was because of the wanting an unaffiliated, to me, is disingenuous, because you have four Republicans currently, two unaffiliates already on there, one being the chair and one being the secretary. And Kathy Grant was asked for a name of a Democrat, and that name was put forward. So, it seems that the, you know, the point, the reason that Danielle was not voted for was not about her being a Democrat. And I think that that's a little disappointing, and I guess I echo Sally's feeling that it's related to the fact that she spoke out against some positions on the town.
This board will keep, this board will keep that applicant open for other appointments. The reality is, I have someone that's more qualified.
Then why, I'm just, I guess I'm, it's confusing to me why a Democrat, if you had someone already that you wanted, why did you ask Kathy for the name of a Democrat?
No, I totally.
So, that to me, that to me is, it's confusing. It seems to me, or it appears, that it is a rejection of the candidate, not of, of the fact that she's a Democrat. And you can, you know, say that that's not the case, and that's fine, but I, it is disappointing to me because, you know, I've spoken out against things that I've been concerned about, and does that then disqualify me from ever serving on a board or commission because I've not always been happy? Or I've wanted to, you know, present an opposing position? The whole point of government is to be able to hear multiple different positions, to be able to get different viewpoints on different issues.
So, I think you're missing the point. I think you're missing the point. And I have a good relationship with Kathy. I said out of courtesy to you, Kathy, if you'd like, rather than me introduce the unaffiliated candidate tonight and vote that candidate in, if you had another selection that was more qualified, I didn't say this to Kathy, more qualified, but in my mind during that conversation, if you have someone else that ends up being more qualified, we'll consider it, than the unaffiliated.
So, what is the qualification to be on the Community Services Board?
I want someone who's been part of this community for years, who's demonstrated giving back to the community, who is going to be an asset to the commission because of the contacts and relationships that he or she may have on this board. That's critically important. This Community Services Commission works with various agencies, the Senior Citizen Center. It does a lot with the toy chest in terms of giving toys. We work closely with, with the, with BH Care, who's in our Community Services Center. And I want someone that's got relationships and contacts, and has demonstrated for a long time here in North Haven, that they have the best interest of North Haven at heart.
So, is it that if you haven't lived here for a certain period of time?
No.
You're not qualified, and you don't have the contacts, so you can't give back to your community?
On this commission, I want someone with contacts, relationships, that can help this commission, help the town of North Haven.
Okay, I'll reiterate, as a Democrat in the town, I'm very disappointed that, that that's the position, that the.
Our track record here is, we, we have supported the Democratic Party with commissions for the nine years I've been in office. On this particular commission, I want someone that has the credentials of the person I just referenced.
Well, then, I, then I, I think that that should have been explicitly explained to Kathy Grant, as opposed to going to the Democrats, asking them to put up, who do you want to represent you on this board or commission, and then having it voted down.
So, we.
Based on, based on the fact that you have one that's an unaffiliated, and you want an unaffiliated, given the fact that you already are going to have underrepresentation of Democrats in town, because you only have two Democratic positions on that board. So, I just, you know, I don't want to argue, you, that's your point, but I, it's very disappointing to me, and I just, I had to get up and voice it.
Okay, thank you for your opinion.
Nancy Barrett, One Crestview Drive. So, I would also like to just make a quick comment regarding item number nine, which was the appointment of Danielle Morphy for the Community Services Commission. So, I have from the North Haven, Connecticut, Town of North Haven Government description of the Community Services Commission. It's an advisory authority, which oversees the activities of the Community Services Department, reports to the selectmen on the activities and performances of the Community Services Department and its director, studies the needs of the community for programs which might be administered by the Community Services Department, suggests the additional, addition or removal of programs conducted by the department, reviews the budget prior to its submission by the director to the selectmen, and monitors the expenditures, receipts, and operations of the department. A monthly report is presented by the director to the commission, and the minutes are on file at the Community Service Office and the town library. So, to me, that sounds like very specific functions that have nothing to do with an ability to fundraise outside of the town. It has nothing to do with any type of contacts that have been made over time, and in my opinion, it really should have nothing to do with party affiliation. In my opinion, to actually represent the town, you should have a commission that represents the spectrum of the town. You should have individuals of a wide age range, for example. And from what I understand, there's no one on this commission that has young children, and we're talking about the Community Services Commission. Most of the program. Most of the programs that are under the authority of the Community Services Commission have to do with young children in our town. Many of them, I shouldn't say, not all of them, but many.
I'm glad you qualified that.
Many of them, I shouldn't say all of them.
A large part of this is the Senior Citizen Center, a large part of this is the drug counselors, substance abuse counselors.
Well, we have, we have representatives that can actually address all of those issues with their contacts. But I don't believe that we have any representation that actually addresses young families with young children.
Michelle Spader, Young Family?
She does not have young children.
Well.
I consider Danielle's children to be young children. And I think that, again, this is not about, it shouldn't be about political affiliation, it should be about who can actually serve these, these various requirements. So I read this very specifically because this description does not actually reflect what you've just described, Mike, in terms of the actual qualifications that you're looking for, for this position. And again, if we already have four Republicans and two unaffiliates, unaffiliated people, and there are three Democrats, one is now vacated, I, I just don't understand how you can possibly then replace the one with, with an unaffiliated. That doesn't seem like an accurate way to be running business. And so again.
There's two unaffiliates on already?
There are two unaffiliates already. There are four Republicans.
There'd be four Republicans to be unaffiliated, okay.
There will be three unaffiliated and then two Democrats if you, in fact, you go forward with the recommendation that you're making.
I wasn't aware of that.
So I think that that, those are important, but again, in my opinion, I don't think this should be about party affiliation. I think it should be what individuals as a whole can best reflect the needs and interests of this community. And I think having a young person with young children can actually serve a very critical perspective and need for this town. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks for your, thanks for your comment, Nancy.
Hi, do I need to restate my name and address?
Yes, please do.
Jill Mallor Kesselman, 2255 Ridge Road. I want to echo Jenny and Nancy's concerns. I'm also deeply disappointed at your decision to not vote to place Danielle on the commission. I have come to know Danielle very well, and I know that her interests, while you may not always agree with her positions, are certainly in the best interests of the town. And it's important to have different points of view on a commission. I was even more disappointed to learn that in your statements for opposing Danielle, you spoke about the need to have more unaffiliated people on committees. You've already got two on this committee. You've got four Republicans, and two of those four Republicans' terms are up in December. So why not give one of their positions to another unaffiliated, rather than taking one of the three Democratic positions and giving that to an unaffiliated? So I'm very disappointed in your logic and decision. On a different, hopefully less controversial note, I wanted to mention that on December 2nd, when the tree lighting is, is also the first night of Hanukkah. So perhaps the lighting of the Hanukkah could be coordinated with the lighting of the tree?
Yes, we've done that for years here.
But it so happens that the first candle is December 2nd.
And we always, we always do that. We look at the first candle lighting, and in this case, we will do that.
Okay, great.
We've had that now, maybe for five years, and it's, it was brought to my attention, and I totally agree that we should do this, and it's a nice unit.
And just one more thing, as a relatively new person to North Haven, your comments before about having somebody on commissions because they've been here a long time and have a lot of contacts is very disheartening to me. It makes me feel like I shouldn't bother to apply to be on any committees, because I've only been here for two years. You're not encouraging new people to the town of North Haven to get involved by making that statement. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Morphy.
Hi, Danielle Morphy, Clintonville Road. I am going to address the appointment and the vote. In April of 2017, Mr. Frida, I came to a budget meeting with my small son, Henry. Just for the record, I've been here for eight years. I hope that counts for something. Aside from that, I spoke up and I asked a question, and the one thing that really struck out in my mind, Mr. Frida, was how enthusiastic and excited you were. And you said, "Wow, it is really good to see new faces, young people, young families coming in, paying attention to this town, and getting involved." Now, you must be a man of your word, right? You couldn't have just been for show. And I continued to show up, I continued to ask questions. Some of these questions were not questions maybe the majority of the board wanted to answer. Yes, I dug deeper. But I am committed to this town. I own a home in this town, my children are going to grow up here, my husband grew up here, you very much respect him. I mean, he's an unaffiliated voter. He has 39 years on here. His mom lived here for most of her life, she still lives here. There are several things I take issue with. First of all, saying that you would discount me because I'm a Democrat is really scary from a, like a democratic process, and Mr. Piper, you too. That's very disappointing to hear. Then we look at the logistics of the breakdown of the commission, we already have two U's, we have two outgoing Republicans. I would be filling an existing term. So I take issue with that. What else do I take issue with? Well, then, could it possibly be personal? I don't think so. I saw you at Chick-fil-A, Mr. Frida.
We did.
Yes.
And I actually talked to your husband, Chris.
We enjoyed a good smile, and you had a great conversation with my husband.
I did.
But, so to me, saying that you talked to Kathy and you went into detail about Kathy's the DTC chair, you know, what was really truly in your mind versus what you said to her, well, that wasn't clear. You asked her to put a name forth, my DTC supported me unanimously, and they wanted me to be appointed to this. I'm fine either way with whatever the decision is. I'm highly disappointed, I think it's political, I think it's partisan, and it's, I'm not done. Sorry.
Is there anything else you're interested in in the future?
No, I want this commission.
I happen to have someone I think's more qualified, so that's kinda what it boils down to.
And you were not clear with Kathy about that. And that is the truth. And I dabble only in the truth, Mr. Frida. And so all I ask is for transparency and honesty. And what just happened here was not transparent.
Well, I'm trying to be transparent to tell you, I have someone I think's more qualified than you, so.
Okay.
That's really what this is about.
And why were they not put up three years ago when someone else's seat came up?
Well, there's a lot of reasons for that, the travel schedule of the person at the time, but we have this, this person for seven years.
Yes, for seven years.
She's wanted to be on this for seven years.
For a three-year term. There are two outgoing Republicans. I can give you their names. Mr. Bathrick, who's the chair, and then I think it's Christine Oris.
Yeah.
Christine Oris. They expire at the end of this month, at the end of December.
So we give people the opportunity to re-up Democrats and Republicans and unaffiliates. We don't just bounce people off these commissions. Valerie sends letters to everyone who is, whose term is expiring and asks them if they'd like to re-up. We do that for Democrats and Republicans.
I think regardless, the fact that you feel that you, that the D next to my name disqualifies me, that was what you first said.
No, your qualifications on this position are not what this other person has.
Mr. Frida, you said, "She's a Democrat, I wanna fill this with a U," and Mr. Piper, you said the same thing.
Because of her qualifications.
No, you did not say that.
Well, I'm telling you that, I said it three times here tonight, so.
You said it after the fact, when you realized how absolutely partisan that is.
No, she's right. In the beginning, when we were talking about it, you said you felt that the, you said the unaffiliates constitute 52% of the electorate and deserve to, so I got the impression that you wanted the U, and that's why I kept, kept stressing that I agreed to a U replacing Democrat, Mr. Dr. McFederin, then the U replacing a Democrat on conservation when Mary, Mary Mann left, you know. To me, it was more of a U. The first time I've heard about better qualified was here now during public comment.
And frankly, to say that someone lived here 25 years versus eight years is highly offensive. And as Jill, a new resident of only two years, I mirror that sentiment. I mean, how many years does it take to be considered an actual resident of this town? There are a lot of new families in this town, Mr. Frida. And my, my last point, and I'm not gonna argue that the decision is made, but you close a door on Democrats because they're Democrats, or they don't, they haven't lived here long enough, which is really, really, it makes me shake. It's really sad and offensive. You close that door, though, Mr. Frida, people are not gonna stop knocking.
I think if you look back over nine years, you'll find that we've, we've added more Democrats than we've ever had in my, in my administration.
Well, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other comments? All right, hearing none, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor? All right.
Aye.
Thanks.
The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant from the town of North Haven. Watch town meetings or other videos on demand at nhtv.com.